...in the city of even your twenty miles per hour. I don't know if you guys are interested in changing out of your signs because you already purchased those.
And those were paid for through, those were paid for through grants? I mean, I, I don't think it would be worth replacing those signs.
No.
It looked like we said any posted speed limit. So if you're driving down, if the speed limit in the city of Ely is twenty-five miles an hour unless otherwise posted, that's what it is. So if you're driving down a highway that's a twenty mile an hour speed zone essentially, that OHV can go turn all the way up. If you're going that trail with already marked with a, with a speed limit on it, I think you, that's up to the, the, I wouldn't change the sign.
The thing you have to keep in mind with speed here is if, a lot of the pneumatic tires that are on OHVs and ATVs are not built for highway use.
That's correct.
So you throw an ATV on a city street and do twenty-five miles per hour down that road, I think you're creating a traffic hazard from that operator. Because that ATV does not handle properly a twenty-five mile per hour on a paved roadway. They grip and they turn and they flip very easily. So, in respect, um, you know, I, I'm supporting the lower speeds, just because of this, the safety issues. The UHVs, um, a lot of them have street tire long, but if you're going with an ATV, it's just not good for that.
Could we amend that or UHVs could travel at posted speed limit? All others would need to abide by fifteen.
We have the, we have the, like, Eurobikes that can follow on this as well.
And Eurobikes are licensed for this.
That's correct.
I really think it's not. It's why we need two different classifications, the OHV and the UHV. I really agree.
ATV. ATV is all great, it's more guy. OHV is all, all highway vehicle. UGV is, U-utilities.
Yeah, the razors.
The razors and side-by-side. ATV.
Yeah, they, they handle this stuff.
Yeah, they do.
So how are the ATVs, they, uh...
What's your thoughts, Mr. Henry, on side-by-side with the proper identification with the stars being able to travel?
You know, we've, we've given them variants within the city, um, you know, as long as they're registered with, um, attorney. Paul and I have had this conversation that we've just kind of gave them, um, they, if they've registered with the DMV and they have the star license plate, we've allowed them to utilize just about every street in the city as long as they're licensed and, and patented and insured, so.
I got another question. Do you legally have to wear a helmet when you go?
Well, that's by statute. There is no exceptions. And four ninety regulations, the helmet, yes, so we just don't wear it around.
And we'll go back to, to, uh, come, ATV, the all-terrain vehicles. Under this, right now, we're going to require them to have insurance to leave the town. How do you get that insurance? They also get the star.
No.
They register that way.
No.
No.
Only, only side-by-sides and the star.
Only if they're armed.
Yeah, that's what I was asking. Should you require them to have insurance then?
Any other comments or questions on the side of you? One, a sec, the first and a second.
I've got a question. I, I agree with what Kurt says, you know, I'm, I'm, I know what an OHV is, an ATV, and a UHV. I think, in this thing, we're going to do this, I think we need to get a better definition of that. And that's one thing. But this whole thing sounds to me is, um, crazy. In the snow flies around here, we get the White Pine County version of the Cajun Navy. There are four-wheelers running around plowing all over the street, pushing it into the street. And they've been doing this for years. Now we're having big issues just blow it away there.
Well, I don't think we're having a big issue because of the following.
But doesn't follow this?
Sure.
That's all, that's all the comment.
Alright. I think the state does have a definition of OHV.
They do, it's not satisfied whatsoever.
It's not satisfied.
Yeah, so unless we want to go in the business of, of sub-regulating what an OHV is, you know, what the state does, it's not, it's a terrible definition.
I don't think we all do that.
The only thing that is parsed out from everything else is large ATVs, the, the large side-by-sides. So if you can fit two people next to each other, or if it has a truck bed, it may get special privileges, one of them being registration, the other being the ability to operate on county roads unless barred by statute, resolution, or ordinance.
But we're not really concerned with county roads here?
Uh, we're not, because we only have portions of them throughout the town.
So, we do have a first and a second, though.
Can we put some verbiage in there that reflects that maybe of our thoughts tonight?
Which part?
Uh, a large, side-by-side, or whatever you want to call it.
Just the definition from the NRS, because I mean, it's, it's all in there, I mean.
Well, just for a point of clarification, so we don't have to read this, this again, and then they should have put in there that if it is licensed and insured, they have the right to travel freely, or whatever you, however you want to call it.
They don't have that, though. We can't call, we can't create our own class of motor vehicle and go beyond what the state says can operate on highways. We just can't do it, so.
Terry, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
Yeah.
The sheriff just said that they can travel, travel to town.
First of all, I, I'm, something the sheriff said, and, uh, when they put the signs up, that it turned into like a freezer hall. One of the reasons for that, and I caution the past mayor on this, was to put an educational program in at the same time.
And, and we're working on that, and I know we didn't do it at the same time, Terry.
Yeah, it didn't happen, I think that's probably a part, was part of that.
I agree with you.
And, uh, when I was down at the, uh, OHVs, um, State OhVs, um, at the county, I mean, they brought up some good points, uh, on this section on the violations and the nuisance part of it, under six twelve, that's fourth. What they do now in Moappa, they don't have it written, but they, they pull somebody over, they put them on notice. That puts them in the file that they've been pulled over, so that they're on record that they had had a problem with them. And if it continues, then they have on it, they usually just give them a warning a second time. That's basically what this is, that you're stretching it out and, and make it a little more restrictive. But I caution, caution the council that any program that you put in, in place, you have to publicize it and have an educational program. Otherwise, the public has no clue what's going on out there. Most of the people I talk to don't even know that this order exists, and, and never heard of it before.
Right.
Or think that we, why is it, if you consider it, you put it in the paper or something like that.
We are, Terry, but I, I need any comments, just so the sake of getting through this, and that we're not here until nine o'clock tonight, about what we're trying to pass right now.
Okay.
We are working on the, on the education part, and Jennifer will give a few on that, down the road here.
Thank you.
Just, just for the record, grant has been submitted, and, and next week there were the usual applications and the arguments for educational materials, so.
Yeah, I got, I got checks that, that they received.
So we, we do have a first and a second. Any other questions or comments on what we're proposing to make changes to here for now? Hearing them, I will call the, oh, in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Hearing them so ordered. Um, seeing as how we do have a few people here regarding the Corral Association, I'm going to move on to see number five, new business for Mayor Robertson, Ely City Council Association, Corral boss Kent Linsky, discussion for possible action, approval of lease to Ely City Corrals, the Ely City Corral Association, for all of their year for a period of twenty years. This was something that was proposed a while ago. Uh, we've been kind of going around on what to do with the Corral Association. Lately, um, events have come to light where the city's been involved, and the current administration wasn't aware the city was involved because of an active of past administrations, and I don't know that this quite worked out for as many people's papers from the other two, but. Mr. Linsky?
I'm, as you say, I'm the corral boss and also the president of the Corral Association. And as you can see by the people here, they support me on this, that we would like to do this and take over the corrals and try and make it a better place.
So we did have, um, there is a draft lease agreement. Uh, they would be required to get the liability insurance.
Yes.
Um, there is an out clause in case something comes down the road, or the city would need that land for, but I, I don't see any immediate future need for that. There, this is also on the agenda for the county, the county commission this next Wednesday. Uh, because there are some property issues there where they may own some of that. Rather than go through and spend six thousand dollars surveying this and figure it out, uh, we decided to put claim that and say, look, whatever we have down there, you guys are welcome to use. Uh, they will put together a lease description, as I understand it.
Yeah, I should have your, to tomorrow.
Okay.
Of just the grounds of the corral's occupied multitudes. I think the Corral Association can do a much better job of taking care of this, certainly than the city has in the past. And there is, there is a, there is a certain liability for us taking money, I think, for these corrals, and not providing the oversight that I think these, uh, the Corral Association can, yeah, so. Uh, with that, are there any questions for Mr. Linsky or Brian, or?
I'm going for Kent. This is going to be controlling, not controlling, removing the waste.
That would be myself, as I've been doing for the last year.
So you're, you're hauling from the designated areas to, to the, to the plant, so?
I think, I, well, that's the only thing that's controlling it, that we will maintain that.
Maintain that.
How it is, he's got, that big tractor down there, sure, if they, if on there, you have, he's been doing that on, on the, on the, so.
He's going to continue to do that? What do you think about?
I've been also.
It's their responsibility, is what it'll be, yeah.
I've also been taking care of the arena, which was dangerous, up until I started working at the ground. And now it's much better, we have people coming in from the county using our facility now, which we didn't before, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Linsky or Mr.?
I do, I just want to clarify, sir, is, is the Ely Corral, is the, the name is the Ely City Corral Association, correct?
No, we've changed it to the White Pine Corral Association, so that we can bring people in.
Alright, is that entity formed as a five oh one C three, is it formed as a nonprofit?
We are working on that as we speak.
Okay, so, full disclosure, until that's accomplished, this lease cannot proceed under these parameters. So in Nevada, both cities and counties are able to lease unused property of a city or county to nonprofits for basically very little formality, that's why we were able to get it on the agenda so quick. No, no appraisal, um, no bid process, stuff like that, as long as it's for a charitable purpose. Uh, so that, that, that formation would actually have to be in place for anybody, for this to have, have legal effect essentially, so.
So we can vote to approve it, as soon as they have their organization, we sign their agreement, yeah?
And then also, I've got a question for both of you. But what do I need exactly from the interest?
Oh, the number? Our, our insurance carrier recommended five million dollars.
Five million dollars, and is there any deductible or anything like that, or?
I mean, I think that's going to be up to the insurance company that you choose, I mean, we don't specify, I mean, because the five million dollars would be a payout to us as a secondary insurer in the county, to the extent the county owns part of that property as well.
There isn't typically a deductible on liability coverage.
That's just the kind of unreliable liability cover. Are there any other questions regarding the sites? I would really love to hear your opinion on that.
Subtle.
Any other discussions?
And it needs to be contingent on the discussion.
Again. Uh, seeing as there's a discussion, I'll call for a vote on the papers.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terry, it's ordered, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, we'll move back to item two, under D O business, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Approval of second reading of ordinance seven two seven, bill number twenty eighteen, national. Ordinance seven two seven, on page chapter five of title one of the city code of the city of Ely requiring the city council to create a code contract, which under prescribing violation of the code contract on the spot, which in the meeting's NRS, two two six, point three forty, and eliminating appointment department heads, creating protocol for these appointments, and prescribing that no city official may be appointed for department, such as appointment implicates a conflict of interest, and instead of real, severability laws. Um, we did go over this, we're inclined to come to make sure that we have everything from the last few meetings discussion incorporated into it. I think you'll find that it is a delightfully simplified document to read. So, are there questions regarding that? Did make that change that the councilman person during that last time?
I know it's one, it's a bitty, tiny, right dead center, we don't have parking near it anymore.
Yeah, we, we grappled with that at the beginning, and we just figured, in case, you know, I know that you change it, you know, I mean, if it's not there, it's not there, so.
Any further questions or discussions on the side of the table? Anything to be, need to be incorporated? All in your favor?
Subtle.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Uh, so we had a tie, I guess I, I vote for it, so. With that, we will move on to new business, item one, council members, city's cleared to discuss for possible action, opening and awarding of bids of city of Ely personal property sale, silent auction for legal notice in November twenty second, twenty nineteen edition P D files.
Just to bring to the city council's attention, when this was noticed, the pay, the legal notice stated that bids would be opened at three oh five, we were due at three o'clock yesterday, so I apologize for the airing the agenda. They haven't opened hardly prepared spreadsheets for us. So if you look at those that have been handed out, for the personal property bids with no title, I recommend that the Golden Camaro be awarded to Watts for a hundred and thirty dollars, and the Navy Gray Pickup be awarded to Reynoso for twenty-five, that white pickup with two beds and lots be awarded to Reynoso for a hundred, and the Chevy Gray Blazer be awarded to Watts for one thirty, and the old classic Mercury Meteor be awarded to Watts for one thirty, and the smaller aluminum boat on fishing with trailer be awarded to Reynoso for twenty-five. If we could have that as a separate motion before we go on to the city property, that would be great. The other vehicles receive zero bills.
Any questions on this? All in your favor?
Subtle.
Do I have a second?
Oh, second cut?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Terry, it's ordered, we're going to the personal property thing.
And the city vehicles? So, I would recommend that we award the ninety-seven Ford to Watts for six hundred and sixty dollars, the nineteen eighty-four Chevy to Watts for one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, the nineteen eighty Chevy C two five hundred to Watts for one thousand one hundred and forty dollars, the nineteen eighty International Water Truck to Yalde for one thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars, the eighty-six Chevy Dump Truck to Watts for one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, and the, um, Miller Welder to Watts for four hundred and forty dollars.
Any questions regarding any of these bids? All in your favor?
Subtle.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terry, you have, so, we will move on to item two, new business. Mayor Robertson, RSVP, White Pine County Field Representative, Cozette, outreach discussion for possible action, approval to donate two thousand dollars towards the replacement of the ISVP van that benefits the city to elderly people in our community. Ms. Elbe's made this request at the last meeting, and we had a discussion with the treasurer regarding this. If you guys have any questions regarding where the money would be coming from, or who's it going to be?
Who, who is the treasurer saying?
Um, I'm kind of, you know, I hesitate to donate money, but this one, I'm inclined to say, okay, I've been, I don't know how to go about this. I'm very cautious with the money, whereas I don't know quite yet exactly where we stand with last year, but we're getting a better idea, and I'm feeling better about it. A lot of stuff going on. The reason why I do support this is it is a service to the community. The county does contribute towards this, and I just feel like I can figure out where we can get it. It will come out of the general fund, I'm just not sure exactly where it is yet, but I am, am on this for it. But, just this one thing.
That's what you always ask me.
It's not that, it's not what it did for, but I will work as best I can to get it in there, and, um, I don't want this to open the floodgates for people to think that they can come to the city or just any donations. This is an extreme service to the people of the city that I think it's worth giving it to.
I do ask the city treasurer where the money is going to come from. I believe you said the administration fund?
Yeah, right now, it's looking like the, uh, the admin is the most flush, but this one is subject to change, but.
I also recommend, I know she had enough to do with this current budget, but in the future, we need to have a contingency.
Oh, yeah.
For something like this, because as she indicated, our budgets are tight. They're really tight right now, so what, whoever budgeted your last budget, they have plans for all that money, so we may have to tighten down and make the budget work, but I agree with the city treasurer, it's a great benefit to the community.
Any other questions or comments? All in your favor on the side?
Subtle, be approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Terry, it's ordered, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll move on to item three, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action. Review and possible approval of city of Ely participation in National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program for city of Ely utility customers, Bill.
Good evening. I am Bill Coffey from the National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program, and I'm here to discuss, honorable mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to discuss our program and how it can help the benefits of Ely. It's a program for the water and sewer lines, the lateral lines on the homeowner's property. We are the only service line warranty program approved by the National League of Cities and endorsed by the National League of Cities and utility service partners, the company I work for. We are a home serve company, Better Business Bureau A plus rated company, and also a recipient of the two thousand eighteen Torch Award for Marketplace Act. And let's just say, there is a presentation in each of your packets. So moving forward to the next page, the benefits of the program for the city. Uh, first and foremost, it helps address public policy issue of aging infrastructure. On the city side, you have public works to look after the sewer lines, the water lines, and everything that breaks. On the homeowner's side of a property, they don't have that. Those lines are out of sight, out of mind, oftentimes, they don't think that they're responsible for them, or they think the city should look after it, and that's not the case. Or, in some cases, a homeowner's policy might have a rider to cover those lines, but unless you have that rider, unless you look at what the terms are, they're out-of-pocket expenses for the homeowner. Oftentimes, a very unpleasant conversation for the public works crew to have. When the homeowner has a high water bill, they have to pay that bill because there's a leak, or the line is, uh, broken and needs to be replaced, and the city does have to pay for the homeowner, needs to go back to that payment. Uh, the other thing is that, um, the program educates the homeowners on their lateral wiring, water lines responsibilities. It's all about my brick mail, so we're simply letting them know these lines are their responsibility, and the lines do break, they do fail. The typical lifespan is about forty or fifty years. In most homes in the US, the average is about thirty-seven, so they're right there at this cusp of the lifespan. We don't, uh, require any kind of inspections, pre-inspection. If the homeowner wants to sign up, they simply sign up, and they are covered thirty days after the sign up. Program also provides peace of mind. With one toll-free phone call, the homeowner has coverage, they've enrolled in the program, we take care of everything from there. Our group is open twenty-four seven, and we can look after, on holidays, you name it, uh, we can look after having a local area plumber come out and take care of the problem, repair everything. We vet the plumbers fully, we look for A-plus rated plumbers, we, uh, take care of billing through them, so there's no billing that goes, um, from the plumber to the homeowner unless they exceed the coverage limits of what we offer. Last thing is, we provide a ongoing revenue stream to the city. Some cities want that, some cities don't, I'll discuss what the pricing is, and then you can decide which way you want to go. We have a non-royalty program where there is no money coming back to the city, then we have a royalty program where there is. You have both agreements that we've shared with you. The coverage itself, we won't be covered, we provide protection for the water and sewer lines, those lateral lines on the homeowner's property. Every time the plumber comes out, there's eighty-five hundred dollars worth of coverage. If the coverage or the expensive line replacement or repair is higher than that, the homeowner will pay the plumber the difference. But otherwise, we pay the plumber, they don't invoice the customer. Customer doesn't get any bill, they don't get any paperwork, there is no deductible. There's also no annual lifetime limit, so if they had one or two repairs in one year, and then the following five months, they have to replace the line, as long as it's eighty-five hundred or less for each of those occurrences, they're covered. We also offer, um, affordable monthly rates. It's five seventy-five for the water line program. If you decide to not take the royalty, which is fifty cents per month back to the city, the coverage would be five twenty-five, therefore you'd be passing along the savings to your residents. If you decide to go with the sewer line program, that pricing is seven twenty-five per month, I'm sorry, seven seventy-five, and if you decide to not go with the royalty program, it would be seven twenty-five, fifty cents less. In other words, six dollars per year would come to the city for every that signs up. The last thing is that when the homeowner is doing well, they transfer the risk of the lines to us, so they're no longer responsible for those lines. We take care of that through our warranty program, which is an insurance, and we look after taking care of those homeowners. They call us to sign up, everything is done term key with us, we take care of the postage for the mailings, we take care of the marketing, the advertising, the billing, all of the customer service roles, and again, we vet the plumbers thoroughly to make sure we have plumbers that are working with the city, know how to pull the right permits, work to the right codes of your city, and do the job right the first time. Switching to the next page, what it covers for in-home plumbing. That provides three thousand dollars per occurrence, that takes care of the water line, the sewer line inside the home, the line in the slab or the basement of the home, the water in sewer in the main stack, and it covers even things like a clogged toilet. Again, no deductible, no paperwork, no forms to fill out. The homeowner simply calls us, not the city, when there's a problem, and then we look after sending the local plumber out to take care of the repair. Our marketing approach is very simple, no public funds are used, because again, we take care of the marketing, advertising, and billing. Uh, we only do it by direct mail, there's three direct mail pieces per year. We don't send anything out without the city first approving the letter, so you know what's in the letter. It's a template that we use with all of our cities across the US. And, um, once you approve the letter, then that letter will go out about two weeks later to the homeowners, so you know also what it's going to get to the homeowners. Uh, participation is voluntary and optional for the homeowners. By the city participating in this program, you're not saying to your homeowners you have to sign up, you're just saying that these lines can fail, and you educate them in the letter on those respects, and it's optional, if you'd like to sign up, you can. They have three ways to sign up, they can phone the mailer and mail it back to us, we take care of the stamp. They can call us and sign up, or they can go online and sign up. So, it's very simple that way. And should they want to cancel the program, they can cancel it anytime, just like an insurance policy, get a retro refund back. The marketing clearly states that the city does not provide this program, so that what you do, uh, have the mailers going out, your residents here will know that the city's participating in the program, that you're not providing the program, you're not collecting any money, you're not putting any of the building on your utility bills, we're taking care of all that. So again, it's no cost to the city, no public funds. We're in over six hundred and fifty cities across forty-two states. Here in the state of Nevada, we're in, um, partner with city of Las Vegas, city of North Las Vegas, and Loveland. And we also are a League of Nevada Cities and Municipalities, um, endorsed by them, so we have a lot of activity with that as well, especially after the League Conference Fund two months ago, down in Henderson. Last thing that we talked about, um, we have over six hundred and fifty partnerships, as I mentioned, over four million customers and seven million contracts, so some folks want more than one. They can either choose the water line program, they can choose the sewer line program. can choose the sewer line program, they can choose the in-home plumbing, or all three, and there's a discount if they do more than one. We have an excellent 97% claims rating. Over the last three years, our companies had 1.3 million claims and spent over $454 million saving our customers those real costs. So we cover what we're going to cover, we're not in the business of denying all the claims. 3% denial, oftentimes it's because homeowners haven't been paying by the month, or they got out of the program, then they have a repair or a problem, they contact us and realize, I'm not the program anymore, I didn't continue paying. Last thing is, when we passed out a survey, then out of 10 folks said that they'd recommend our program to other friends, family, and relatives, and recent Harris polls said that over 90% of, I'm sorry, 2 in 5 Americans cannot afford an unexpected emergency like this that totals $500. The costs are real, these repairs are real, they can be $2,000, $3,000, $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 to replace a water line or a sewer line. And with our coverage, since it's $8,500, it covers sewer, street cutting, sidewalk cutting if it's needed, everything to get that new line put in if it requires a new line, otherwise the plumber will repair the line. That's kind of everything on the program. The last thing that I say is that we're here to, as I mentioned earlier, address the public policy issue of aging infrastructure. We're interested in partnering with the city of Eli, and we'd welcome the opportunity to do so in office to your home. We do require the use of the city logo on the letterhead, the advertising, the marketing, and the building that we do, therefore the homeowners know that the city is participating in the program, it's not just some company that is trying to promote a product in your city unknown to the city, unknown to the mayor, the council members. So I ask that you please assist us in introducing the program to your residents by looking over the two agreements that we provided and approving the program. It does require the signature of a city official and utility service partners, works, and we are Service Line Warranties of America, so Service Line Warranties of America, this is the company that looks after the actual policies. I know this is very quick, but I'm open for any questions you may have.
I wish that would have happened six years ago.
I hear that often from council members. How bad is your repair?
It's $150 bucks. Tree root, well, you know, my tree root.
Oh, wow.
Way to count.
And just to provide a little background to the council, this company had come before the Eli City Council back in, I want to say May, this year. I happened to be in the audience at that time. I think it's a great service, there are a lot of older homes and older utilities in the city, it sounds like a great service to offer the community. I would encourage the council to vote for the non-royalty plans so that that savings gets passed on to, what savings there is, gets passed on to the people buying the policy. I mean, if the city was participating, it would have come to like $50 a year kickback if there were 100 people signed up, and that's not, I don't think worth the, the thing on that, but I, I really think it's a good product, and the more, the more, the more services we can offer the citizens, I think, the better, but that's kind of, that's been.
I have a question. Outside the city limits, we supply water to county residents, are they covered, would they be covered?
I believe there will be. Mayor Robertson, I spoke about that earlier, and I'll double check, but it's basically going to be offered to anybody, single-family homeowners, so not available to commercial buildings, not available to an apartment building, but anybody who has their own water and sewer lateral lines. And I will double check that, but I believe it will be, because we're going to go off of your list of customers that we mailed to.
So can you describe, I guess my main question is, what, it says that we provide the city logo to the billing statement, is there anything that sort of explains to the person in the billing statement that they're not being billed by the city, that the city can't place a lien on their property, or anything like that?
Sure.
Some limiting language, is that included typically, or?
What is included, basically, in the letter, it explains that the homeowner's signing up with us.
Okay.
So either in our marketing agreement, the city's identified on any legal action.
Correct.
It's a three-year agreement with one-year rules after that, and the reason that we do, the logo's mostly for the letter.
Okay.
You have the logo on the letter, but then it also is for these other things that are mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, my primary concern is the billing statement, right? Because it shows up, and it just says City of Eli, even then somebody else's name on it, I mean.
Sure.
I think it's like, I understand they've signed up for it, but it's probably like the legal confusion.
Yeah, the letter makes it clear that they are signing up with us, and they contact us to sign up and to pay us.
Okay.
So I think that that's clear. We also include in the very first letter, notification from the city that explains why the city participated in the program, just something to kind of give them a note that says, this program, the city wanted to participate in it, make it available for you as an optional program, you don't have to sign up, many folks will find value in it.
I imagine there will still be some calls to the city hall. Some questions over there. Okay. Any other questions?
I have another one question, can a person pay a year in advance, or that?
Yes, they can, so those billing options I mentioned, they can pay annual advance or monthly, so if they pay annual advance and they cancel, they give priority back, they pay monthly, they just contact us to say, I'm out of the program, and then after that last monthly payment, they don't have to pay anymore.
All in your favor?
I'm going to get a motion, I think it's a great idea. Royalty or non-royalty?
Non-royalty. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other further discussion on the side? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it so ordered.
Thank you very much, council, thank you, Ray.
We'll move on to item four, Mayor Robertson, council and all, working discussion for possible action, approval of interlocual agreement for change distribution of tax revenues within the City of Eli White Mine County and the White Mine County Hospital District. Do you want to be a little bit?
Yeah, I have to roll stuff through the process, and past years, it took forever to do this, a lot of aggling, screaming, all of it. This was, this was really pleasant this year, I appreciate Jeanette, and the city first lead, and the mayor's been a long time, and myself, we sat there. Kenny came through, and in the past years, this agreement has not worked. The gentleman by the name of Kevin Wayne, the Department of Taxation, and we, we used to be getting around $154,000 out of this rate, and now we're at around $3,000 bucks, so the, one of the county commissioners was there, and he said, let's just cross the board, this is a better way to give the city, $200,000. That was a quick, right there, and there was one other meeting, and they said, yes, we have to cross the board, the gentleman there, he said, we agree with this, this fine, and it was, was it a?
Two-year?
Two-year?
Two-year.
A two-year agreement. And that two-year agreement will give our staff a better, a chance to better understand this whole CTX distribution thing. It's quite complicated, so the way this worked, I think, it was a great idea, and it went real quickly.
Any questions here? All in your favor?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll save it.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it so ordered. We'll move on to item six, council member Craig DeCass, discussion for possible action, selection of Clinton Burdick CPAs to perform in Nevada over the railway, 2018, 2019.
So, when I got that, I discovered that the.